Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
How are you, sir?
Good, how are you, sir?
Good, sir.
Everything. Don't jump on renewables too quick.
The February 16th, 2021 meeting in the City Council of City of Springfield, Illinois, is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Senator Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie. Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman De Senso. Alderman McMenamin.
He was having difficulties, he said he'd be joining when he could.
Yes, thank you.
Technical difficulties.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, Quorum is present.
Thank you. For the zoning portion of our meeting, one item is docket number 2021-005 for the property located at 1301 West Washington. It's my understanding that that's going to be postponed for 30 days for the request. Is that right, Alderwoman Connolly?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
So there's a motion to postpone for 30 days. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Been seconded by Alderman Donlin. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to postpone 021-004 for 30 days.
Okay.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to postpone docket number 2021-004 for the property located at 1249 Toronto Road. And second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2020-044 for the property located at parcel one of 5761 International Parkway and parcel two, part of tax ID 21-15.0-100-025. Petitioners Emerald Valley Industries LLC, Emerald Shield Transportation Services LLC, and Emerald Valley Industries LLC, Green Team LLC. Present zoning classification is parcel one, is I-1 Light Industrial District, Section 155.040, and parcel two is I-1 Restricted Industrial, Sangamon County zoning, with zoning relief granted in docket 2003-114 for reclassification to I-1 Light Industrial District, Section 155.040, upon annexation to the city. Requested zoning relief is a conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.040 C12, conditional permitted uses in the I-1 Light Industrial District, adult-use cannabis craft growers, and Section 155.211.9, adult-use cannabis craft growers, and Section 155.040 C14, conditional permitted uses in the I-1 Light Industrial District, adult-use cannabis transporting organization or processing organization, and Section 155.211.10, adult-use cannabis transporting organization or processing organization, and Section 155.492, conditional permitted use. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is as amended. Approval of the requested conditional permitted use for the adult-use cannabis craft grower limited to 14,000 square feet of enclosed secure adult-use cannabis cultivation center in the flowering stage in accordance with state law, and approval of the requested conditional permitted use for a transporter. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accepted. Recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff as amended. Chair will entertain the motion.
Mayor, I wasn't sure this was coming up, and I haven't had a chance to really speak to the businesses around there, and I'm planning on having a meeting. Is there any type of, I don't know if anyone's here to, if we hold this for 30 days so I can meet with the businesses out there?
I don't know. If someone's here from petitioner, if you'd like to come up and state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it, and if you'd state whether that would create any type of issues postponing for 30 days, please.
Adrian Johnson, Principal Officer, with Emerald Valley Industries. I understand the motion, however, I would have to disagree with, you know, carrying that over because we're under guidelines from the state of Illinois, waiting on licensure, you know, information for licensure, and at this time, we basically are, you know, in a pending status on whether or not, you know, we're going to accept licensure. So in order for us to be prepared for that, another 30 days would probably put us in jeopardy of being able to accept licensure when it's, you know, due any day to be brought for us.
All right, well, my concern with this is the fact that I wasn't able to, I wasn't sure it was coming up, and I want, I talked to you before about wanting to get a meeting with some of the businesses out there prior to...
And that can still happen, it's just that, you know, I would like for it to happen along the course that we would, you know, don't want to hinder any progress that we've been making.
Yeah, but if it votes up today, it doesn't make a difference. That's my point, so.
I'm giving you my commitment that I will have the meeting with those particular parties you have interest in me meeting with.
Alderwoman Turner.
This is, the, this has been in process for quite a, quite a long time, and when it first came up, there was a provision in that we had to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission because of an oversight when we first passed the recreational cannabis. And the petitioner had a pending licensure application with the state of Illinois, and we asked him at that point to pull that, to pull that back and jump through some hoops because we had to jump through some hoops in order to get this on the docket for tonight. So we've already put him in a two-month period of kind of being in abeyance, waiting for us to work on this. So he's already kind of waited two months. And Alderman Hanauer, I know that you and I have spoken about this, and so you knew that it was, you know, pending, and you knew that it was coming up. So I just don't think it's fair that we've already had the petitioner in a two-month holding pattern, trying to get this on the docket and jumping through the hoops, and I'm afraid that if we hold it over for another 30 days, his opportunity to secure the license will, will be in jeopardy because we're not sure when the state is going to act on those licenses. I mean, they could act on them any day now because actually, the deadline for action has passed, and they were just kind of holding it up. So I would hate to be in a situation where we've already held him up two months and then have the state of Illinois act on the license and he not have what he needs, and then, you know, he kind of loses that opportunity.
Alderman Gregory.
Mr. Johnson, let me ask you, did you, was there any other locations, like out east, that you could fit this in with boundaries?
Not as the ordinance are currently constructed, there was, there were no properties that would fit into the guidelines.
Thank you. I ask that, you know, because that's something that we got to look at down the line. It is really, really hard to get any of these businesses in, particularly my ward and the east side overall, you know, which is, which is the area hardest hit by the war on drugs. So I would really, really, really like to look at that in the future, you know, I would be supportive of you, you know, I definitely wish, you know, more of these things could be on the east side, but, you know, best wishes to you.
Thank you very much, and I am interested in working with you on future projects as well.
I appreciate it.
Could you tell me exactly where this is, Ralph?
Yeah, it's out by Keller Foods and American Metals out there off of...
Wallbash?
Off Wallbash, yeah.
International Parkway at the last point at the furthest west cul-de-sac.
Does it go, does it run into a dead end down that way?
Yeah.
Does that work where the, where the storage units are?
No.
No, the opposite way.
It's where the, there's a dog, dog country club or something like that out there.
Okay, I got an idea where it is now.
Yeah.
Is there any other discussion or questions? Is there a motion to approve or deny, or what's the pleasure?
Well, I prefer to wait, but if someone wants to make a motion, I'm not going to hold it up.
I make a motion to approve.
There's a second?
Second.
Been moving second to approve. Any discussion? Alderman Proctor. Yeah, Alderwoman Turner, can you clarify, is it a recommendation as amended by the regional planning staff or?
Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't, I couldn't hear Alderman Proctor, but...
Yeah, I was asking what the motion was, if it was based on the regional planning staff recommendation as amended.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Alderman McMenamin.
Sorry to be late, it's a technical issue, so...
Your mic's off. My mic's off.
So, sorry for being late and let the record reflect, I'm here now. I've got a constituent that owns property right near the proposed transportation center, and a question that he had is, before this gets moved along too far, is your financing in place for this project?
Yes, it is.
And how much does your financing depend upon an enterprise zone extension?
That's only in consideration at this point.
I mention that because later on, the city council will be asked to extend the present, the presently existing enterprise zone to reach your property, and the benefits of enterprise zone include the avoidance of sales tax on construction supplies, et cetera, and there's a break on real estate taxes that also oftentimes, sorry, I'm out of breath because I had to run to get over here because my computer wasn't working, and I jumped in the car and got over here, so, sorry about that, but, so your neighbor has concerns about the viability of the project, basically. He doesn't want to see, you know, a half-constructed building and then financing issues develop and it never gets completed. So that's the concern that I have, besides the fact that historically, you know, I've always voted against cannabis-type projects, and this one with the enterprise zone extension, it's got the additional unusual feature where the government is being asked to subsidize a cannabis operation. This is a transportation center, so that's a unique feature to this one, where the government is actually going to help subsidize a cannabis business with the taxpayers helping to make the project financially viable. So I know a lot of my constituents will have a problem with that, and I realize that's not on the table right now, tonight, but it's just going to be down the road, so I'm explaining part of what will be my no vote, so, sorry, I can't help you on this.
Alderwoman Turner.
You know, I guess there's a couple of things I just want to say not to prolong, not to prolong this, this debate, and in a minute, either Alderman Redpath or Alderman Gregory's going to say call to question, so I'm going to talk really quickly. Number one, this is a zoning application that we're discussing. I have, I've not known in other instances where we have actually, you know, questioned petitioners about their, about their financing during a zoning vote, so I don't know why we would be doing that now, that's number one. Number two, even though it, I think that it's not appropriate, the petitioner answered the question and said that his financing was not contingent upon the extension of the enterprise zone. This is purely a zoning vote, number one. Number two, no matter how anybody feels about, personally feels about recreational cannabis and all of the different business opportunities that go along with it, the city of Springfield has voted that we are, you know, recreational cannabis is here in the city of Springfield, and we, we put into place all of the different hoops that everybody has to jump through in order to participate in that business. We, we set that agenda, and this petitioner has followed that agenda. This is something that's been, you know, like I said before, we, you know, he was in a, in a position where he had to wait two months, and, you know, it just was by the grace of God that, that the state was in a situation where they held up moving forward with, with these licenses, or he would have lost his opportunity. And if we hold this any longer, there's this distinct possibility that he will lose his opportunity. So, again, this is a zoning issue, it's gone before the zoning board, the zoning board voted approval, and so there's a motion on the floor for approval.
Alderman Redpath.
Corporation Council, could you tell me what other uses this property could have under this type of zoning?
Well, there, there would be a, excuse me, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this would be typical commercial zoning, meaning that just the normal items that are allowed under the zoning code for I-1 Light Industrial would be appropriate, and there's a whole variety of different, you know, there's quite a range of different uses.
Okay, so if, for some reason, and I, I'm not saying it will, but if for some reason the project doesn't go through, it's not going to put the area in, into a bad situation because we changed the zoning, is that correct?
Well, it would just be as any other, would be as any other zoning process with similar, with the similar classification.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's an industrial park out there, so, pretty much.
Oh, it is, it is an industrial, okay. I guess it would be since it's named Industrial Park Road, right?
Alderman McMenamin, then Alderwoman Turner.
Yeah, I understand the concerns expressed, that this is a zoning issue, and I think the individuals that have, at least one individual in particular that owns property right in this immediate area, he, he was expecting that others that would come into the area would have the same zoning classification that, that he has, and so I think that there's a desire for that individual to protect his property and to, and that's the reason for the no vote, that he would like to see like-kind businesses in the area that would be consistent with the existing zoning. So this does not comport with the existing zoning out there, and that's why there's a petition for approval, so I understand it.
Excuse me, if I'm mistaken, you know, mistaken here, it's zoned appropriately for these uses, am I correct?
That is correct.
Thank you very much.
Well, there's, apparently there's some zoning relief being given here, so...
No, it's, so the reason why, the reason why there's zoning, the reason why it went through these, the zoning is because any, the way that we did the recreational cannabis was that all, any cannabis-related was, business was, had to go through the zoning process, so that's the reason why it's going through the zoning process, is because that is the provision that we put in, that we put into place. And, you know, so there's a couple of things that, that come to mind. Number one, unless, if you, if you buy property in a, in a specific location, unless you buy all of the properties surrounding you, you really can't dictate what other businesses come into that, into that area. It's a crapshoot once you buy property there. The other thing about it is, we, the city of Springfield has voted to allow recreational cannabis, and I, you know, when, when we were, we, we've only voted on, on, I guess we voted on two, one downtown and one in Ward III. So, you know, I don't think that the city of Springfield should be, should have the mindset that we're only going to be comfortable with recreational cannabis business in a, in a specific part of the city. You know, it, this, it's, it's legal in the entire city of Springfield, so, you know, we just need to get ready for it, and if, if, if people have the means and the opportunity, then they should be given, you know, the, the same consideration, no matter where it's located, if it's located in Ward II, III, VIII, IX, or X. So, you know, I, I just, you know, I'm, I guess I'm just feeling a little uneasy about, you know, what, the way that, the way that the questioning and, and some of the things that are popping up around this. You know, whenever we were talking about recreational cannabis in Ward III, it was like, I made a motion and there was a vote. Now all of a sudden, there's a, you know, 20-minute discussion about it and where it is and what's happening and, and, and all of that. So this, this is, this is the process that we put in place, this petitioner has followed that process, we've already held him up two months, I don't want to hold him up any longer and have him perhaps lose his opportunity to, to participate in a legal business. So, yeah, I'm going to call to question.
Alderwoman Connolly, then Alderman McMenamin, or do, if they call the question, is that it, or council?
If you, if you call the question, then there would be a second to that, and then technically a vote on calling the question. Calling the question is in order at any time, meaning it may be made at any time during a debate.
Alderman Connolly.
Thank you, Mayor. I was simply going to point out the CPU portion of the zoning, that it's not a zoning modification, so I'll go ahead and second Alderwoman Turner's calling the question.
The question's been called.
Request a roll call vote, because I have some concluding comments, I'd like to have the courtesy of being able to respond to those final comments.
Okay. You'd call the roll, and this is for approval of the Sangamon, Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation as amended.
This would just be to call the question, or requires a two-thirds vote? Yes.
So, Mayor, this is for the calling of the question?
Correct. Proceedurally, if we're in the middle of the debate, a motion is made, which is in order at any time for calling the question, if it's seconded, then you would proceed to a vote, and the effect of that is to top it, stop the discussion and proceed with the vote. So the, as I understand it, the motion's been made, it has been seconded, and a request was made for roll call on the motion to call the question.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Senator Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie. Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman De Senso.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear Alderman Fulgenzie's vote.
He voted yes.
Okay, well, I guess, I just wanted to have the courtesy of having my final comments, so I'm going to vote a no so I can make those comments.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Nine ayes and one nay, Mayor.
Thank you.
So you, so now you proceed with, with the vote?
So, go ahead and proceed with the vote, call the question of, call the roll call, please, and again, it's Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation as amended.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Senator Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman De Senso.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
No.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Nine ayes and one nay, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-001 for the property located at 709 South 11th Street and part of 711 South 11th Street. Petitioners WC Media Inc., Robert E. Seidner, and Deborah Seidner. Present zoning classification is I-1 Light Industrial District, Section 155.040. Requested zoning relief to allow a one-sided double-stacked billboard, two signs consisting of one face, supporting by monopoly structure and utilizing LED lighting to illuminate the non-digital faces with conditional permitted uses and variances as follows. CPU Section 155.341C to permit two off-premises signs, each having a height of 12 feet and a length of 24 feet, and each sign consisting of 288, 288 square feet per sign for a total of 576 square feet instead of the maximum 175 feet allowed, and a height of 40 feet instead of 35 feet allowed, and CPU Section 155.325C to permit a sign 40 feet and exceeding 35 feet but not exceeding 50 feet, and a variance of Section 155.321A, a permit, the total ground signage on a premises to be no greater than 576 feet rather than the 60 square feet allowed as a result of approximately 60 feet of front yard, street frontage, 155.340E to permit a setback from the property line of the premises of less than 15 feet from the north and west property lines, consistent with the distances identified in Exhibit C, three feet from the north property line, and 7.79 feet from the west property line, 155.340D to permit the billboard structures to be located within 500 feet of a lot which is zoned residential or on a lot used for residential purposes, 155.340E to permit two off-premise signs on the premises, 155.340I2 to permit the base of the new billboard structure to be devoid of landscaping, similar to on-premises sign requirements, 155.340I3 to permit the proposed monopoly to be devoid of decorative panels or bases, 155.340I6 to permit two off-premises sign faces facing east, 155.340J to allow the issuance of billboard permitting to installation of one monopoly structure with two off-premises signs facing without surrendering permits on a four, four-for-one basis, and 155.341A to permit an off-premises sign in the I-1 district to permit two off-premises signs, each having a height of 12 feet and a length of 24 feet, and each consisting of 288 square feet per, per sign for the of 24 feet, and each consisting of 288 square feet per, per sign for the total of seven, 576 feet and a height of 40 feet. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is denial of the petition as submitted. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the petition as submitted. Chair will entertain a motion.
Wow, what a, what a explanation.
Yeah.
Absolutely, motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Second. Been moved and seconded to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation for approval, or the staff of denial.
Approve them.
For approval.
Yes.
So the planning and zoning commission recommendation to accept the petition as submitted. And second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Senator Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Ten ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is document number 2021-002 for the property located at 320 East Carpenter Street. Petitioners, Memorial Health System. Present's only classification is B2, General Business Service District, Section 155.034, requests zoning relief or reclassification to S3, Central Shopping District, Section 155.032, and a variance pursuant to Section 155.212, general provision variances in Section 155.213, applications for variances for a variance from the sign regulations of Section 155.320 through Section 155.325, commercial and industrial district sign regulations to allow the S2 sign regulations. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is approval of the requested S3 zoning and variance. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept and rec, the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation. And second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Senator Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Ten ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is document number 2021-003 for the property located at 26 Bay Ridge Lane. Petitioners are Donald and Kelly Wallraven. Present's only classification is R1, Single Family Residence District, Section 155.016, requests zoning relief, a petition to vary Section 9 docks of Appendix A of the land use plan for Lake Springfield and its marginal lands to remove the existing dock, which extends 28 feet from the shoreline, and install a covered floating single well dock that is 20 feet wide and 28 feet long, that will have a walkway that is additional 20 feet long. When complete, the structure will extend 48 feet from the shoreline. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation and grant the petition as submitted. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move that we accept the planning and zoning commission's recommendation.
Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation. And second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Senator Alderwoman Turner. Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Is this a vote on Bay Ridge Lane? Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Ten ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. And that concludes the zoning portion of our meeting. This time, the chair will recognize Treasurer Buscher for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The corporate fund in the month of January had a beginning balance of $19,86,060. We took in total receipts of $8,978,329. We had total disbursements in the month of January of $8,33,350, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance in the month of January of $20,031,39. That concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Is there a motion for approval? So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the February 2nd, 2021 Regular City Council Meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading ordinances of the record of the city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion?
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the consent, pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of the city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will call the roll.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Senator Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Aye.
Alderwoman, Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Ten ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. Agenda number 2017-103, 2018-110, 2019-008, 2019-430, 2020-067, 2020-153, 2020-207, 2020-273, 2020-315, 2020-346, 2020-378, 2020-379, 2020-380, 2020-404, 2020-464, and 2020-538 remain tabled during committee. Is there any action on any of those? Next item on the agenda is 2020-406, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $589,323 for payments to the Police and Fire Pension Fund. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2020-406 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Redpath.
Mr. McCarty, is this, the total 589,323, is that to be split between the two pensions, or is it for each, each one of them going to get that amount?
It'll be split.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? And just to clarify, that is an extra payment above and beyond what is normally budgeted in to the, for the annual payment. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Senator Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Ten ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2020-442. There's a request to hold that till the next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on agenda is 2021-018, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Family Video Movie Club for the purchase of real estate located at 1028, 1032, and 1036 East Monroe Street in the amount of $604,203.97, and closing costs in the amount of $5,000, and for a total amount not to exceed $609,203.97 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project Usable Segment III for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-018 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Senator Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Yes.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
No.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Nine ayes and one nay, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2021-019, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Family Video Inc., Family Video Movies Inc., and the Hoagland 2015 Children Property Limited Partnership for the purchase of real estate located at 1022 and 1032 East Adams Street and 1017 East Monroe Street in the amount of $1,273,296.03, and closing costs in the amount of $10,000, and for a total amount not to exceed $1,283,296.03 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project Usable Segment III for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-019 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Senator Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
No.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Nine ayes and one nay, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2021-023, an ordinance amending Chapter 50 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended relating to electric interfund transfer percentage. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-023 on final passage.
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of parliamentary procedure.
Yep. Alderman Donlin.
Correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that the budget ordinance, which is the next ordinance, but however, this one is related, as we know, to the budget, is, or the plan is to have a special council meeting next week to address the budget ordinance, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, on the 23rd.
Is it appropriate at this time for us to do, to do both of those next week?
What would we have to do to just post it? Corporation Council?
Sorry. What I was going to say, you certainly may make a motion that this be considered with a special council meeting, you know, together with the appropriation ordinance, if that's what you would like to do.
Yeah, I'd like to make that motion.
We'll, we'll post it, make sure they're both on the agenda so they can be debated or discussed.
Great. Thank you. So is that a motion, right?
Yes, that's a motion.
Yep.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to place agenda number 2021-023 on the appropriation discussion on February 23rd. And second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2021-024, an annual appropriation ordinance of the city of Springfield, Illinois. For the fiscal year beginning March 1st, 2021, and ending February 28th, 2022, the chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-024 on final passage.
Make a motion to hold until 23rd?
Yep. Place on the agenda.
At the special council meeting.
It's been, yep. Been moved by Alderman Hanauer to place this on the February 23rd meeting as well, and seconded by Alderman Donlin. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2021-027, an ordinance amending Chapter 100, Section 100.03B of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to the portion of the city's hotel motel tax dedicated to the Springfield Metropolitan Exposition and Auditorium Authority, SMEA, and authorizing the execution of an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Springfield and SMEA. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-027 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, chair will entertain a motion to adopt proposed amendment number one, which changes the date from March 1st to June 1st.
So moved.
Okay. Been moved and seconded, any discussion on the amendment? All in favor, say aye. Sorry, Alderman McMenamin.
I received a really helpful phone call from the, the chair of this board, Mr. Coffey, and in the course of that conversation, we discussed a request that you were going to make to the SMEA. You don't have to indicate what that request was, but were you satisfied with the response you received?
Yes, I did talk to Mike Coffey as well. They said they worked with us on the kiosk.
Very good.
What it was. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Discussion on the ordinance as amended? All those in favor of the ordinance as amended, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no.[1576.01] All those in favor of the ordinance as amended, vote yes, those opposed, vote no, the clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Senator Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Yes.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Ten ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2021-029, an ordinance accepting donation of land owned by Children's Museum Foundation Corporation located at 412 East Adams Street and authorizing a lease of land with a right of reversion to the Children's Museum Foundation Corporation. Chairlentain a motion to place Agenda number 2021-029 on final passage.
So moved.
Second the motion.
Been moved in second, discussion Alderman Redpath.
Can you tell me, corporation counsel, by us accepting this land, does that avoid property taxes somehow?
Alderman, we did, we were able to check, I think, actually Director McCarty had last week, and we also followed up on that. The current property is exempt, they followed the proper statutory requirements, so they are exempt. This transaction would not change that status. It is still, I want to make clear that this is still subject to their board and the banks working together on it, so this is authorization to proceed with that if that happens, however, however, it is with the express understanding that there would be no liability of any kind to the city. And the purpose of the, of this proposal, the transaction that came from the Children's Museum is so that they could become eligible for certain grants that they are not eligible for now because, simply because of the way the property is held.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes, those opposed, vote no, the clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
I'd just like to explain that I've always opposed the Children's Museum, frankly, because of the way the structure was set up, that they were trying to support employees, about 11 employees if I remember right, through donations, it's really not a structure that I think was going to be successful. I'm willing to vote for this ordinance now in order to try to give them a new direction, and hopefully they will get on their feet and make this a success, so I will be voting aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Senator Alderwoman Turner.
I'm voting yes, and I have the same sentiments as Alderman Redpath. As everyone knows, I was, I was in support of the concept of the Children's Museum, but I never thought that it was, the way that it was structured was fiscally sound, so I am hopeful that this will, as Alderman Redpath said, give them an opportunity to move forward and be a success and be a, continue to be a contributing factor to downtown Springfield.
Yes.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Ten ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. I know Leah Wilson, the executive director of Kidzium's on, I don't know if she wants to say anything, but we appreciate the partnership, appreciate everybody's support for this. Chairlentain a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading Agenda number 2021-051, an ordinance authorizing the sale of surplus property, commonly known as 3,000 Adley Stevenson Drive, in the amount of $1,500,000.
Sorry, I'm not sure if I'm being called.
Is there a motion?
Um, yes.
Second, second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay, motion carries. Chairlentain a motion to suspend with rules and place on first reading Agenda number 2021-052, an ordinance authorizing a one-year extension of the intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Sangamon County, Illinois Board of Public, Board of Health for Animal Control Services.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 No.
Nay, motion carries. Is there any unfinished business come before the city council? Alderman Gregory, and then Alderman Redpath.
Go ahead, you're good.
I just wanted to, first, I really, really, really want to compliment Juan Hurtam from our community relations, he has been doing a great job, I've been sending him, citizen after citizen with multiple issues on rental assistance, and he's been, he's been doing a marvelous job. But, but I want to ask, so Mayor, we have landlords who have, and we talked about it just a little bit, we have landlords that have all utilities included, residence, apartments or homes, and those residents are struggling to pay rent, which they're struggling to pay RCWLP. So I know we're, you know, Juan's working on that, but I think the sheer amount that we're seeing is going to be a little bit overwhelming for him, so, you know, I don't know what the process would be for that, or if we need to put in an ordinance or whatnot, but I like to talk about that, to see how we can just help them with their utilities, and at the same time, of the residents who are, who are going through things. So that brings me to my next topic, rental assistance, I know, I believe, we have some money somewhere that we're looking to do somewhere from the cares funds or cures funds. I think it's about time for some rental assistance to go back out, maybe to our, you know, our urban leagues and Fifth Street Renaissance, all of our partners, but I think we should look at expounding on some of the organizations to help with that. I say that because of the timeframe, that many of those residents have had the wait, for whatever reason, not blaming anybody, but for whatever reason, I think having more people and more avenues where we can send residents to get assistance will help, and everybody serves a little bit of everybody. And then, of course, I'm sure somebody's going to talk about snow, so I'm not going to go there, but alleys with entrances, I had an email from an older guy, his only interest into his alley is, into his garage is through his alley. Of course, it's major snow, and he asked me if we could have a truck, I think it's too big, of course, but I would like to, you know, explore what do we do in those situations where we, where we have that. I'm sorry. I ain't my meeting.
Is that true? Yeah, we'll take a look at those. Alderman Redpath and Alderman Hanauer.
Mayor, I'd like to bring something to the attention of the council, I know most of us have received this email from Bob Gray in reference to the expenditures for the police and fire from the Illinois Comptroller's files, it's kind of disturbing, and I asked Alderman, I mean Director McCarty, if he would come in and kind of give us an explanation of this. As you all know, that we are going into the budget session next week and voting on a budget that's going to be debated, I'm sure, with, and amendments will follow. I have severe concerns about the fire department, and I'm going to be bringing amendments to address those, but I really was disturbed by this, this letter, and I actually, once you look at the numbers, it kind of throws you off, so if I could, Mr. Mayor, I would defer to Director McCarty to give us an explanation of that.
Director McCarty?
Thank you, Alderman. One thing I'll say is, this information just came in recently, and before we get, or before I expound too much on it, I really, I've asked staff to, to verify the information, because depending on where it comes from, there are some reports you can get that report things differently than others, so I want to make sure that we're comparing everything, apples to apples, as it were, and when I'm able to do that, I'll be able to talk a little bit more about it, but I will tell you that this particular issue is an issue that's been near and dear to Mr. Gray's heart for a number of years, I know he spends a great deal of time researching it, so I have no reason to doubt the veracity of the information, I just want to make sure that it's all coming from the same place and that it's accurate. So once it is verified, then I'll be able to talk a little bit more about it, if that's okay with you.
That's fair, I just wanted to bring attention to it to the council, because we're going to be addressing this probably next week, and make sure that we all are prepared to defend our position on where we want to go with our public safety. I know that we've asked the fire chief and the police chief to look at their budgets, to streamline, I know that we're talking about adding firehouses, building new firehouses and, and replacing old ones, and which was probably a great idea, but we need to really look at all this. There's, there's an enormous amount of money being involved, I know we went up $11 million from 2020 budget in the fire area, so I'm meeting with the budget director tomorrow, and then we're going to be looking at potential amendments to the budget, so just wanted to bring that point across, thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Hanauer, then Alderwoman DeSensio.
Thank you. Nate Bottom, I think it's time to come up to the podium.
I want to talk about snow removal, it apparently is near and dear to a lot of people's hearts today, because I got inundated, as well as I'm sure a lot of the other Aldermen and Women. Did, I guess the number one question, we've got neighborhoods that haven't seen a plow all winter, and I want to give you a chance to explain to people what the criteria is, I've told them it's three or four inches before they'll even put the plows on the road, but my concern is, we got all this snow, and I thought we had contractors out there, did we, did we allow the contractors, or are we just doing it ourselves? Because these neighborhoods need to get, get plows in them, and I know our people work around the clock and they do a good job, but they can't, they can't hit every street, they just can't do it. So what the, I mean, can you explain what's going on? Because I've gotten, I've gotten emails since, since the meeting started, and, you know, virtually every neighborhood in, in Ward 10, I've gotten calls from, or emails from. And I just, it feels like we're out, out on the outskirts of town, and we're not, we're not seeing anything, Nate, and that's what the perception is from the people that live out there.
So our policy is obviously to focus on clearing the mains first, basically for the majority are within a quarter of a mile of the main or secondary event-specific street, which are the major subdivision roads and commercial, commercial roads throughout the city of Springfield, so we definitely, we focus on clearing those first, and then, you're right, we don't go into subdivisions generally until it's a three-inch snow, because a lot of times it's, it's snow-packed and drivable at slower speeds. Now, in regards to this past snow, we obviously, we got six inches of snow, inundated pretty heavily over, over, over a short time, we cleared the mains the best we could to where they were drivable, a lot of them were snow-packed, however they were drivable, then we moved into the subdivision, subdivision streets and local streets early in the morning, we have been clearing those, in essence, all day, and will continue to clear them, and we believe we'll have all the subdivision streets cleared early in the morning, and then we will go ahead and salt and try to clean up the mains, as well as around the, around the schools and the medical district, and we also are going to, in the central business district, focus on getting that cleaned up so that we can lift the snow emergency in the downtown area as quick as possible for the businesses, and then subsequently remove the rest of the snow emergency the following day is the goal. In regards to, we did, as part of the COVID and everything, we did cut contractual costs for this year, so that has put a damper, and our goal is to do it with our, our own workforces. Unfortunately, today, too, one of the drivers in your area is actually one of our barricade crew members, and there was a water main break on 11th Street, and we had to pull him as well as another driver off, so, so that did hamper us a little bit, like I said, we will have all of the streets plowed by the, by the end of the morning, that is our goal, and then touching up the mains.
Well, it just seems like we, you know, like I said, we're out, and I've got some that are pretty far out, and it takes forever to get there if, if, I mean, I understand we want to try to cut costs, but, but a snow event isn't, isn't the place to cut cost. And I just don't think we can do it with our own crews, it's, it's, you know, if we base it on the last couple days, I mean, I don't see it, I'm, and I'll probably, Gene will probably be calling me, but, but we need, we need supplemental help to get, to get the Centenials and Savannah Points and, well, Piper Glen even, I mean, they, you know, I was getting lit up by Piper Glen and.
Yeah, and we did have Piper Glen, I know we had the south portion cleared, I believe, by noon, and then we wrapped up the north portion early, early in the afternoon, I believe Savannah Point and Reserve were cleared around the 10, 11 o'clock range as well.
But I also want to make sure that, I was getting calls from the new Oak Park Estates, the new area, I want to make sure that you're, that, that map has been updated, because I've gotten, gotten emails from them, so I, look, I know your guys are going at it hard, and, and I appreciate it, but when we see we got a six-inch snow, we're going, Mayor, we've got to get the, get the, get these contractors out to, to help, not only, and I, I don't know how, how yours was, Alderman Donlin, or, or, you know, Chuck, I, I mean, at least, you know, Lake Services is out there to help, help with some of yours, but, I mean, it's just, it's not good.
Yeah, I'm sure after this, they do do an assessment on what worked well and what didn't, so that's definitely one of the items we'll take a look at. Alderman McMenamin?
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
I was, I was next, I was next.
Okay, go ahead, Alderwoman DeSensio, then Alderman McMenamin.
Thank you. Alderman Hanauer, I feel your pain, I'm right in the middle of the city, and we haven't seen a plow yet, so this isn't just a, you know, Ward 10, Ward 9 issue, this, I am right, my, I live right next to South Grand, and I have not seen a plow. I've been told from 3:00 this afternoon I'd see a plow, I had neighbors get their cars off the streets, still no plow. So this is a heavily traveled area, and it has not seen a plow. But that isn't what I was talking about, I was talking, my, I was going back to the firehouse issue and the fire department issue, yes, Mr. Gray, this has been an issue that has been near and dear to his heart for quite a long time, and Alderman Gregory and I have received separate emails from him, you know, thinking we should volunteer a firehouse to be shut down in one of our wards, which I think most of the fires happen in our wards, so it's a little insulting that he's putting that out there, I don't disagree that there might be some sort of cost savings, but when you're talking about two of the heavily, most heavily hit areas for structure fires, that's not a good idea. So that's all I have to say about that.
Yeah, we agree on that point. Alderman McMenamin?
Thank you.
Director Bottom, thank you for putting out your regular emails to keep us all up to date with snow operations, I see you put one out on Thursday, you put one out yesterday, you put one out today, and some of the key points you make in your emails are really helpful when, then that's Alderman, when we pass that information on to our constituents, because you explain how by concentrating on the mains, typically we get, we cover everyone within a quarter mile of a main, and so, yeah, they have to take some risk to get that quarter mile, but they can get there. My wife and I, we distribute foods to District 186 families every Tuesday and Thursday mornings, so we were out at 6:30 this morning, and we did some deliveries on, on, well, we traveled a lot of streets in the near southwest side of Springfield, and we were able to get through, fortunately, some of the, again, the mains were covered, and so, your, your, your drivers, they do the best they can, and fortunately, we didn't have 18 inches like they had up in northern Illinois in some of the urban areas, Chicago's had 40 inches in two weeks up there, so we just got to be patient, and drive carefully, slow down, and just wait for the plows to get up, out there, we're not going to have double the plows, so, because we only want to use them, because we're, for an event that might only happen once per winter, hopefully, once per winter, so I just want to express gratitude to the plow drivers, they got a dangerous job, and we all just got to wait for our areas to be plowed, and we can't do everything simultaneously, it's got to be in sequence, and I'm getting these calls, too, and people get impatient, and so hang in there, Director Bottom.
We will, thanks.
Alderman Redpath and Alderman Donlin.
But guess what? I think that you're doing a better job than you guys have done in the past, this, this last couple times, the crews have been very active, and this enormity amount of snow is hard for anybody to, you know, understand. I've been on the city council since 1987, and the very day I got elected, Alderman, the very next day, we had a major snowstorm, and the ladies' road, or driveway was buried, and scared me to death, I thought, oh my gosh, I just got, I just got elected, and so guess what I did, I went over and shoveled their driveway, and my dad told me, said, "Son, I know you take this stuff seriously, but you can't shovel everybody's driveway." So just want to tell you that little story, but, you know, they did the mains pretty good today, and I had several people call me, as Alderman Hanauer, Alderman Donlin and others have, and Alderman DeSensio, but the bottom line is, is that the mains are the most important things to start with, we followed up with calls to your team, and they responded immediately, and came out and took care of some cul-de-sacs that got left over, so I'm impressed that it's getting better, and obviously, when, when it gets this bad, and the snow's this bad, you run into, you know, capacity, when you get a water line break and you have to pull people off for a barrier crew, people don't understand, that's, that's a tough deal. So we're asking people to be patient, and we know that you're trying, and it's getting better, and so, you know, we just, and, you know, I really think that the contractor concept is really something that we probably should have invoked today, maybe not every time we do it, but we should have, we should invoke that when we get this amount of snow, because it's just, it's just enormous, and I know our crews can't handle it. As far as Lake Services, I know they're down people, too, but they got the, they got the roads that go in, in and out of the lake, and they don't cover, they don't cover the major areas off the lake, sometimes if they get done soon, they try to help you guys out, I know that, so I appreciate you working with them, and I appreciate what your team's doing, and you've got a good team out there, and we're not criticizing your team, it's just frustration from all of us how much snow we got, because we haven't had this much snow in a long time, so, thank you.
Appreciate the comments, and our team does a great job, it's tough, obviously, we only have so much capacity that we can do, you know, and provide that level of service, so try to do the best with what we have, and we're always looking to improve operations, so, so we'll do that.
Alderman Donlin, then Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mayor, Director, I want to echo some of the comments I heard earlier, I appreciate the updates that you've provided to us, nobody, not everybody is happy until their roads are completely clear, I mean, that's just the reality, and you know that, but I do want to thank specifically the workers that are out on the roads, the truck driver laborers who are out on the roads, and as. driver laborers who are out on the roads. And, and, you know, it's easy to say that they're just out plowing the roads, but it's so critical and it is extremely dangerous, especially with the wind blowing, the snow blowing and the whiteout conditions that we had the last few days. And I, I want to thank you specifically, when I am contacted by someone and I pass that along to the department, I get a reply from you. And I know you're extremely busy, especially during snow events like this. And it is appreciated and it lets me and then I let the constituents know that you take it seriously and we're going to address the issue. And you've got a pretty darn good track record. And when things are brought forward, such as streets out in Ward 9 that are, that are hilly and they need to be salted and plowed, you've, you've been responsive and so is your crews. And I really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Alderman Gregory?
Yes. Nate, same thing. I, I appreciate you. You know, we, we go way back and, 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 and all the guys do a great job. I know many of them. My, my frustration and, and Joe, I, I know you say be patient, but, you know, last year budget season, I added one or two TDL guys. And you just said you had to pull one off. Just saying. We put it there. I know we went through some things, but we gotta hire these people. We gotta hire them. That's why, that's why I added it, is to try to help you guys out. But if we're not going to hire them, I'm spinning my wheels. All right? So I appreciate you, man. Keep working. And, you know, the, the key to this is, you know, getting, getting a few more guys. And I'm always going to push for that, for, for some more city workers and, and ours. I mean, you say we had 100, we used to be 150. I know we contracted some things out. But we, we, we gotta get, we gotta get back, back up there. So I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yeah, there are discussion on this topic that Senator Alderman Turner won't miss. Thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
Any other unfinished business?
There's a lot of state roads out there too, Mayor.
No doubt. We will have Facebook Live tomorrow at 11:30 and be to discuss the budget. We'll have the Fire Chief, Police Chief, and hopefully OBM Director and Nate Bottom will be on that. Is there any new business coming for the council? Has there anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, Mayor. Their, their name is Christina Yucinkas. She's in Council's chambers.
Oh, okay. Christina here? No, not here. Anybody else? Anybody else wish to address the council? I will ask Doug Brown if you'd like to come up, Doug. We did have a correspondence inquiry coming up and it's regarding MISO. So he'll give an overview and if things develop or as they develop, he'll keep everybody posted.
Well, I sent out an email earlier today, just kind of updating everybody on, you know, kind of things that have been happening out in, you know, nationally within Texas and Kansas City, or I'm sorry, Springfield, Missouri. You've all seen that they've had rolling blackouts and those kinds of things. And, you know, just as a couple of quick comments, Texas is like 60% renewables. You know, there's a lot of stuff going around, you know, like wind turbines that they've iced over, they can't run. It's not the only thing that's happening down there though, too. It's, they're basically, a lot of their generation is outside. So like their combustion turbines that are run by fuel or gelling, so they can't run, same thing, not available gas. So there's a lot of issues for them that just doesn't, they don't have enough generation essentially. So with us, you know, we do have enough generation to cover our loads. But we are part of a bigger, you know, grid, right? So with MISO controlling our area and relying on us, if they see a potential shortfall, they're going to notify us that, that there's like maybe like a generation warning essentially. And what that means is that we need to notify our top customers that we want them to start thinking about ways to conserve energy if MISO calls upon us to help with the grid. And, and, and it's, because it's not just about us. So if we have enough generation to handle our loads, you know, the rest of the grid might not. But that can in turn flip very easily if our generators are down and we need to draw power from the grid. We need to rely on them to supply power as well. So it's, it's a, it's a two-way street. So that was kind of the, the purpose of that. The, you know, in fact, Unafore was tripped offline over the weekend and, and then again, tripped off yesterday on a limit switch. So those events can happen. So that's why we need to be mindful of trying to help, like I say, our neighboring, you know, areas on, on, on the grid. So is there any questions with that or?
And if you could, go ahead, Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, looking at Texas, it, it concerns me. And, you know, they, they not only had issues with the cold, but they had issues this summer when, when it was very hot. They, they couldn't keep up. And I don't know, I know there's, what'd you say, 60% renewables? We, we just, we can't afford to be in that situation. And, and I, I saw on social media today, houses where the pipes were frozen, water was sprinting, you know, the, the damage is going to be insane down there. And, you know, so we just, as, as we move forward with that RFP or whatever we've done with it, we gotta keep in mind, we gotta have something that's, when we need it, it's, it's there. And we gotta make sure that we, we have the performance bonds and, and whatnot in place to where if a company says they're going to provide us energy and we call for it and they can't, can't do it, they're going to have to, have to pay us for whatever sum it is based on that. And that's why I've, I pushed hard to have that in that, that RFP. And, you know, at some point, I hope we get to see the results and, and as we move forward. So, but I just want to make sure that we have in, in that, I don't have a problem going with some renewables, but we got to have reliable power. And, you know, Texas has had problems, California's had problems, Germany's had problems and there's, you know, like 70%. I think we gotta, we gotta keep an eye on that. So.
I can follow up with that on a couple of things. One is the typical for contracts for power purchase agreements, you know, whether it's, you know, something that's like a marketplace instrument or product, or if it's maybe a project. If those, the facilities are unable to deliver, there's always usually something in there that, that has something for replacement power. So basically they cover the difference. So for what they provided versus the market. So that, that's usually typical for that. I do want to clarify too, for just our load is that without, if, if you look at our generation that's available, we're roughly about 340 megawatts without Unafore 33. Okay? So that is, our, our, our peak is, was 310. And that was yesterday. So that was a pretty good peak for us for the winter. I think the last peak, let's see here, 2014 was 325. And then last year was like 265. So you can see the weather, you know, the impact that it's had, you know, going from 265 last year to 310 this year, just, just because of this event. So those are the kind of things that we have to be thinking about and be prepared for.
And if you could give the percentages of usage?
Oh, sure. Yeah. So one thing that MISO has, and anybody can go on the MISO's website and look at their, their charts for the day. And you can see the power prices where they were. They're very extremely high. And they fell off today. And that was kind of thing due to, the Kinnick Cave Plant was actually offline. When it came online, it prices dropped tremendously in the area. But yesterday and today, coal was 52% basically of MISO's generation, followed by gas, which was like 25 to 26%. Solar was about 0.5%, maybe it was 0.3. So it was very low. Of course, the sun was not shining. And then Friday this morning, they were all snow covered. So, and I think wind was maybe like 5 to 10%. I don't really recall. I can't remember the, the difference there. So, but you can see though, without coal, you know, unfortunately, you know, I guess we're fortunate because we did have coal. But unfortunately, the direction that everything's going, if they go too fast, they can, it's going to create problems. California's had it. Texas has had it. You know, we, we don't, like you said, Alderman Hanauer, we don't end up in that situation. So we got to very, be very mindful about where we head and the direction that we're going. And, but it's also be in the mind of what the regulations are. So we need to be thinking about environmental regulations, what those costs are, what units we keep and what we don't, and having basically a balanced portfolio. You know, having some renewables, having some coal, having some gas. That's the right method to go for.
Alderman Repath and Alderman McMinimum.
Director, I, I understand us trying to be a good neighbor for MISO, but we are, we can't ever compromise the native load that we have. That's, that's, we won't ever put our own people in jeopardy by delivering out power to the MISO, to the grid. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, MISO's the, basically they're bound by FERC and NERC to, they, they are the authority for balancing the grid. So they can direct us, as being a part of MISO, to do that. And so same thing with PJM for their, their overall, same thing with ERCOT, SPP. So all of those, all of those entities control their, their specific areas. And they can dictate whether, you know, basically loads need to be shed. But that's the last, the last, last step. So that means all your max generation is available and is on. So after that point, then they're going to look at shedding load.
Well, the problem with that is that the taxpayers and the ratepayers in Springfield could be put in jeopardy if, if we're going to, if we get into a situation, they're dictating you're going to cut off part, part of us and send it to somebody else. So I don't, I don't understand that logic.
Well, you got to think of it in reverse too. So if our generation is not available and we're asking them to import power, but they're telling us no, because we didn't let, you know, we didn't return the favor per se. So you, it's not that simple to, to just say that we're not going to be trying to help our people conserve, our, our businesses, you might say. Just like we did today, is basically suggesting different ways to conserve energy and to help the grid out like that.
I understand that. But if we go into a blackout situation, they're not going to be happy campers.
No, I, I, I understand that. I mean, but that's part of being on the, the grid and participating in, in that, I guess you say, as even nationally. I mean, it's, it's not just about just us.
Maybe we ought to reconsider that, that agreement. If that's the case, we don't ever want to put our people in danger of losing, losing their power because we got a power plant that can handle the situation for us. Didn't we, it, maybe I misunderstood some of the numbers that you just threw out there because I always thought that our native load was, was like 195 and then our max was 250. Do I misunderstand that somehow? Can you explain it?
Yeah, I don't know where, I don't really recall those numbers. I just got the numbers that were given to me today for what we had the peak for yesterday being 310.
My point being that we've always had enough generation to cover our native load. That's always been the, the, my concern. No matter what we do, is that we've always known that our, that our native load is a lot less than what our peak is. We can always make, we can always make the coverage. And again, I don't have a problem with, with the MISO thing as long as it don't put our people here in Springfield in danger. If it does, it's going to, it's going to be a problem.
Well, and remember, when I was throwing out the number of 342, so if you had 33 in there right now, it is on, it is limited because there is a condensate pump that's getting, that it needs to be replaced. We're waiting for that part to come in. So it's, it's limited. So right now, we're, we're at 483 available megawatts.
Okay. Thank you.
Was that on 33, Doug?
Yeah. Yeah. There was a condensate pump that the shaft had broke on it when they were bringing it up online the first time. It sat for, for that, for that long, for over, you know, for a little over a year.
And just so everybody understands how the process works, this is ever since the power marketing situation, we don't sell direct to our customers, our residents. It's all sold into the MISO grid.
Right.
And then we have to purchase it back.
I understand.
So that's the, that's the issue. So instead of getting 100% of the dollar, we get 90 some cents or whatever it is. But the other, what we're seeing here is now we have this challenge of being impacted by other areas.
I get that.
Alderman McMinimum.
Yeah, thanks for covering a lot of territory, Doug, and especially the, the concept behind MISO, which is, and on occasion, we'll be asked to support a, a low capacity elsewhere. But at the same time, we know what it's like for one of our units to blow up. We know what it's like for one of our units to have a, a, a serious event where it's down for a year. And then that's when we want to be able to draw in from MISO. So it's a two-way street. I want to comment on Texas. Texas has had a reputation for having a really tight capacity method of doing things where they didn't have much excess capacity built into the system. And I think now it's come back to bite them. And I think MISO has a different philosophy. They preserve capacity so it never gets too tight is the way I understand it. The third comment I want to make is regarding the future, Doug, hopefully you're going to be around at the utility for a long time. So we have continuity and we can look far into the future while addressing the current problems. As we look far into the future, I was really impressed by a full-page article in the Wall Street Journal a week ago Sunday. It talked about the revolution of batteries, of lithium-based batteries. And in the same way that vehicles are using lithium batteries to go further forward and to have more electricity saved up in the battery, that whole concept is going to be in the metropolitan aggregate way down the road where this renewable energy will be captured in just massive banks of batteries. And it won't be the, the situation that we have now where you need the sun or you need the wind or you don't get the renewables. They're going to be able to bank that energy in ever more sophisticated and technologically advanced batteries. So thanks for having folks, engineers and your folks at the utility looking far forward. So we can anticipate what's down the road and keep our options open and be smart about everything we're doing. And, and like we talked about a week ago, those electrical vehicles and having recharging stations everywhere, thanks for recognizing and acknowledging that that's part of our future and we can move in that direction.
Well, thank you, Doug. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Go move. Second.
All favors say aye.
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 We're adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Night, everybody.